Twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-six to twenty twenty-five dash one forty-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-five, authorizing the payment of the bill list in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we adjourn, I just want to remind everyone, I said I would get back to it. Twenty twenty-five dash one forty-four was the resolution authorizing the planning board's review of the proposed amendment amended redevelopment plan for the expanded arts district within the borough of Matutian. That will be a planning board meeting that I understand is currently scheduled as a special meeting for Wednesday, May seventh at seven-thirty, right here in this chamber. So hopefully those of you who were interested in joining us for that purpose will feel comfortable joining us at the planning board for that meeting as well. This is a long meeting, this is a good meeting, productive meeting, opinionated meeting. These are all good things at local government, council president.
I make a motion to adjourn.
The motions are second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Law nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. Said notice was published in the Home News Tribune on January second of this year, posted in Borough Hall, and sent to the Star Ledger for information. All requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act were satisfied. Can we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Adam, you'd be so kind as to plead off for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, of course. Ms. Clarkson? Ms. Cohen?
Yes, you're here.
Mr. Delia?
Here.
Mr. Erickson?
Here.
Ms. Galver?
Here.
Mr. Grossman?
Here.
Ms. Koskoski?
Here.
Mr. Liston?
Here.
Mr. Love? Mayor Bush?
Here.
Mr. Coglin?
Here.
Ms. Thackeraya? Mr. Weister?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, declare a healthy quorum present. Thank you all for coming this evening. The only new business for tonight is going to be the ordinance relating to the amended redevelopment plan for the expanded arts, expanded arts district, which we're going to ask our planner, Chris Cassenza, to kind of walk us through what's already been done with the governing body and tell us all about the elements of it.
Sure, thank you. I don't need to be sworn in, it's not public hearing for redevelopment study, right? I'm Chris Cassenta, Borough Planner. Thank you for coming out to a special meeting, not because it's my birthday, but because the mayor really wanted to be here for this important meeting. So I'll start with the really two versions. I'm gonna start with the short, too long didn't read version, and it's really, two years ago, this board, some members weren't there two years ago, adopted a redevelopment plan for the expanded arts district redevelopment plan. Since that time, the borough has collaborated with a redeveloper, as well as coordinated with the state agency, county agencies, look for funding mechanisms, as well as to really make the project more real in terms of really reactivating the forum theater, as well as pairing it with a redevelopment of the Halsey Street Lot. So, the redevelopment plan is now being sought to be amended by the redevelopment council, rebound entity as a borough council, and the board is really being asked to really look at the changes the plan has already adopted from two years ago. So that was the short version. The long version, I hope to be a truncated version of what Jim Constantine and Chris Palladino from Devco prepared several months ago. You may have gone to the community meetings back in January, or watched the meeting in March, the council meeting. So I'm trying to do a truncated version of that, just in case some members or members of the public did not watch or hasn't been following along. So I'm going a little bit to some of the history, and then I'll get into the details of the amended plan. So, starting off, in two thousand and eighteen, the borough submitted a grant request, and later, in October two thousand and eighteen, the borough, the county awarded the borough a three-point-five million dollar grant from the Middlesex County Cultural and Arts Trust Fund. What this did was really jumpstart the planning for the arts district, which include literal planning, as well as for the purchase of the theater. Pursuant to the local redevelopment housing law, the borough began a process to determine whether the forum theater, really now a strip of land associated with the University of Radiology Medical Office Building, and the, at that time, and still is, a vacant gas station qualified as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment. The report found that the forum theater was in estate disrepair, including visible cracking, damage to foundations, structural issues with the roof, and generally just unsafe conditions, and simply did not fit today's needs or today's code. And it's really during this time that the borough purchased the theater. As you recall, the study was completed in two thousand and eighteen, and we put a pause on it to allow the borough to work with, at the then property owner, to eventually purchase the theater. Once that was completed, the borough took ownership of the property. Then we completed the presentation, and the properties, the three properties, were formally designated as an area in need of redevelopment with condemnation. And the condemnation part is because it's really relevant to the gas station. It's not relevant to the forum theater property, because we own it now. Let's see. So, what this did do is allow the borough to really take ownership to preserve its historical and cultural significance, and really begin the work to determine, to really figure out how to revitalize the theater. Again, this is from several years ago. We're taking baby steps, trying to figure out what can we do with the theater, we just purchased it. A redevelopment plan was prepared, but was never adopted. It was really at that time we thought about, maybe we should expand theater, let's take a pause on it. Additionally, in beginning in two thousand and nineteen, with the help of Jim Maile, his office, the Maile Givens, they prepared the area rehabilitation designation for the entire town, then did a redevelopment plan that applies to the entire community. It doesn't really change much, other than it offers the borough some financial tools and a ability to consider other programs. What that does means is that if the borough were to consider expanding the plan under the rehab designation, it could incorporate it. So more of a technical issue, and a, just another toolbox for redevelopment. Meanwhile, the borough has continued to study an advanced planning concept for the theater block, and really beyond. And this really was in part due to recognizing that the several Victoria errant buildings across Main Street had been demolished, and so this really left, gave us an opportunity to think about, this is the right time to think about what that broader arts district would look like. And it's really during this vision exercise, the borough believed it was, again, it was the right time, in the best interest of the community, that the concept of a Matutian Arts District be expanded beyond just the theater, and include properties across the street on Main Street, including the Halsey Street Lot, to really create a more comprehensive arts district. More recently, I think it was in June of last year, the borough sought the abilities to pursue additional redevelopment tools under the redevelopment designation, that is thirty-year pilot, or condemnation of the Halsey Street Lot. Combination is not necessary, so we utilized the study under non-combinations, study because it's owned by the Matutian Parking Authority. What we determined during this study, as you recall, the Halsey Street Lot started as a small parking area, and it's really expanded in the seventies and later in the nineties. And while the parking lot serves commuters, it is underutilized and is not the most efficient use of land, considering its downtown location, the board obviously determined the property met the criteria for redevelopment. And that's really what's, that's where we left off in terms of the planning board's actions. So what has been happening over the past year or so? So we are several years, as you recall, from two thousand and eighteen, we are several years into the process of studying and planning, and the repurposing, reuse, and transformation of not just the theater, but the revitalization, revitalization of the surrounding properties that constitute the Matutian Arts District from the twenty-twenty-three plan. In January, the borough held two public information sessions at the Edgar Middle School to give an update on the visioning exercise, as well as the concept plans. You probably recall Jim Constantine gave a overview presentation, and then people were filtered out to our science fair method, go to different stations, meet people, talk about the plan. So during Jim's presentation, he began by outlining, really what we identified as the broader goals and objectives of the arts district, including the third point, partnering, financing, and funding to develop and sustain the arts, recognizing that these types of projects are extremely complex, it's really hard for a theater that survived as a solo act, as we called it. And one thing we realized during the years of hard work and planning, is that we had to carefully balance of saving a theater, but having a sustainable theater. That was the, some of the quotes that we gave. It's extremely complex, and it needs to be done part of a broader economic development plan, if you really want to create a transformation plan that's economically viable, and it's useful for future generations. So, what we stated, really during the presentation, was they require special expertise, vision, strategy, and collaboration. And part of that collaboration was really our opportunity to introduce to the borough residents that we have been working with, Devco. It's a nonprofit developer out in New Brunswick, done three billion dollars of work in arts-related types of projects. We've also been working with the county and the state to really identify some funding sources and mechanisms. And it's really at this time that we introduced the concept of the reconstruction of a new theater. And this would be a modern space that meets code requirements and accommodate a variety of events with the fixed seating that you normally see at the current theater, concert, dance performances, comedy shows, but the idea of a black box where the seating is retracted, and the space is really a multi-use standing room space, where you have conventions, banquets, and really more uses that you can do today, that you can't do today in the current theater. In March, we gave a presentation to the governing body, Borough Council, really giving another update on the project, because at this point, we're starting to talk about phasing and financing of the theater. The things are moving quick, because the tax credit program is becoming available, so time was of the essence, but we were at the right point to really engage with community of really the years of planning. It was at this point we introduced the concept of phasing, the idea is that we reconstruct the theater and acquire the forum, the adjacent gas station through the eminent domain. I don't have a status update on that, so I may defer to mayor or council to give me an update on that, otherwise, as part of that first phase, recognizing the need for sustainable source to subsidize the theater, because there's a funding gap for the theater, there's a need to have a development potential on the Halsey Street Lot, which would help address the funding gap for construction, as well as potentially programming the theater. Because again, the theater can't act on its own, it's very expensive. And part of phase two was recognizing the input that the community gave during the January meetings, was we really would like to see arts-related uses incorporated as part of this project, not just the theater, but maker spaces, studios, and a whole range of uses. And I think at this point, we were contemplating, could that potentially be part of this first phase, because we got a lot of great feedback, as you can see on the screen with all the sticky notes, so this is just one of four boards that we had. We had a lot of great feedback, and we're contemplating, should we bring that part of the first phase? So the community does have a real ability to make change. So, on the screen, it's just a summary of all the actions to be taken, I'm not going to read through it again, because I just did that. So for, since two thousand and eighteen, we've done a lot of work, and with the, now working with the redeveloper, and the, working with state and county agencies to really make this project real, we're at the point where we're negotiating with Devco, as well as their planning and development partners, to make certain changes to the plan to make the project a reality. So that's why we're here today. We have an amended plan introduced by the governing body acting as a redevelopment entity, and the plan is called the Matutian Arts District Redevelopment Plan, amended through April twenty twenty-five. The reason we use that title is because we anticipate the plan will continue to evolve and change over the years. So, the twenty twenty-five redevelopment plan. Let's see, that's it for my comments. So, if you were to compare this to the twenty twenty-three plan, it's almost entirely the same with minor modifications to a couple of the parcels, and including adding a parcel. I'll go into those details, what they are, in a few moments. So what's the, according to the local redevelopment housing law, we have certain statutory requirements of a redevelopment plan, which include relationship to local objectives, which is essentially your master plan, proposed zoning requirements, as well as provisions for relocation of affordable or non-affordable housing units, and a plan for replacing them. The relationship to Edison Master Plan, because that's our contiguous municipality, we only have one in this case, Middlesex County Comp Plan, State Plan, and a plan for charging infrastructure. So those are the statutory requirements required to be in a redevelopment plan. And all the plans we've adopted, they have always met those criteria, and I'll briefly go through each of those criterion. What the planning board's role is to, really two things, based on the statute, seven D indicates that the borough council, when they deliver the plan to the planning board, they must make a finding, that all provisions are either substantially consistent or designed to effectuate the master plan. And the planning board, similar to a typical land development ordinance, has forty-five days to make a referral for recommendations. So, generally speaking, as it turns to the highlights of what's changed in the plan, as I said, most of the redevelopment plan remains exactly the same. There's updated introduction and enhanced vision statement, partly because we have done a couple actions since the two thousand and twenty-three plan. We had an area need study of the Halsey Street Lot, and advanced planning with a designated redeveloper, and coordination with agencies. We've added University of Radiology property in its entirety as a new parcel, I'll explain why in a few slides. We've made the flexible standards for the theater block, revised standards for the Halsey Street Lot, which is the, what we call as the residences at the forum, that that's the development that's meant to help support, really close that funding gap of the theater project. And then certain design standards, now that the project's become more real, this is an opportunity to put in some design standards, similar to our Oakay and Golden Plans, like a lot of detailed standards, to make sure the design is right. In terms of relationship to local goals and objectives, we also looked at the existing zoning. As I said, much of the existing plan is already in that, on the left side, in purple, that's the current twenty twenty-three redevelopment plan for the arts district, that's not changing. The other parcel that we're adding is the University of Radiology property, which is in the R-two residential zone, as you can imagine, offices are not permitted in R-two zone, and that's important. So, in terms of the enhanced vision statement, what we basically did is, I saw on the prior slides, lots of photos and renderings of the proposed reconstructive theater, and some images of sample uses that the community had commentary on during the January meeting, that was all incorporated into the redevelopment plan. And all the statements and descriptions and the story that we've been telling over the past few years, has been incorporated into this vision statement. In terms of the actual changes to the zoning regulations to the redevelopment plan, we added the University of Radiology property in its entirety, because, again, the office use is not a conforming use in the R-two zone. What we did do is we incorporated that property and an office use as a permitted use in the redevelopment plan. What this does, it facilitates a conforming subdivision. If we didn't do it, then it would trip up a use variance issue, and the planning board would lose control of the process. So it made sense, as from a planning, from a practical perspective, to incorporate that property in its current form, its current use, which received use variance, probably in nineteen nineties, I believe, to be brought into the plan as a conforming use. What we did do was took the opportunity as well, let's add in the other arts-related uses, in case if the property were ever to be redeveloped in the future, we have the ability to engage and continue some arts-related uses, or can continue to be subject to the current zoning, which is single-family dwellings. We also added two family and live-work units, nice transition to the residential neighborhood as you get further east on Amboy Avenue. In terms of the forum theater block, that's referred to as Parcel A, that hasn't changed. What we did do as a result of feedback from the community during the January meetings, we added some, a couple more arts-related uses, like maker spaces, demonstration kitchens. I think the plan already was pretty all-encompassing in terms of arts uses, but there was some feedback that was very good from the public, and we added those into the plan. We increased the maximum building coverage to a hundred percent, which sounds insane, but it's really meant to give flexibility to the borough, because we own the property. So we ultimately control the design of the theater, and mainly the hundred percent building coverage is really for an allowance, for flexibility. In terms of Parcel C, again, this is the Halsey Street Lot, this is the development that's meant to help close the funding gap in terms of the construction of the theater, as well as be a sustainable source for programming of the theater. So, as a result of negotiations with Devco and their planning and development partners, we've had a lot of work, engagement, back and forth, and we will continue to do so. But we have put something on the books, really in time for the tax credit program as it's released, that something had been put in place in terms of zoning. And I think we got to a good spot, I'm sure the mayor, you have some feedback on that. But in terms of the actual changes to the plan, we actually reduced the maximum density of Parcel C. It used to be a hundred units per acre, now it's ninety-two units per acre, so density's actually been reduced. We did allow for maximum floor area ratio, and reduced setbacks in Halsey and Calvin Place, to give it more flexibility on the building footprint, but recognizing the impact it would have on the southerly lot line, which is where you have residential properties, we actually took the current standard of ten-foot setback, and doubled it to twenty feet, and in upper floors, we quadrupled it to forty feet. Recognizing that with this big hulking building, we want to be able to deal with the setbacks from the residential properties. The current regulations for ten feet simply wasn't adequate, so this is an opportunity to sort of address that, recognizing the building might get taller. On the next slide, you'll see we added additional height allowance for a sixth floor up to seventy feet. Ultimately, the density, floor area ratio, and the height, I refer to as overlays. What that means is that while the plan does have allowances for those things, they can only be captured, or they can only be done by a redevelopment agreement, meaning no one can just simply submit a plan, say, I'm going to build a building of six stories, and you're stuck with it. We wrote the plan such that if you want to do that, you need to engage with the borough and enter into agreement. So the borough has a lot of control, that's the beauty of the redevelopment law. You can have statements, regulations like this, that allow for overlays, subject to redevelopment agreement. So, in terms of the sixth floor, I know we don't have any six-story buildings in Matutian, but this felt like the proper location, because it's one block away from Main Street, just like the Woodmont property. The Woodmont property, if you recall, the mixed-use building, the five-story building, has a tall first floor, which is retail, and then four floors of residential. Here, we have a unique situation, where there's a pretty significant grade change from the Halsey Street Lot at the lower corner, up all the way to Calvin Place by the train station, it was almost a full story. And we're anticipating that this building would have two floors of parking, and then four floors of residential housing units. And as you can imagine, two floors of parking would have a much lower ceiling height, a floor-to-ceiling height, than a traditional first-floor mixed-use building height. So, ultimately, the building will probably still have a five-story building appearance from Calvin Place, and it will be sunken in because of the grade change. But again, all those issues can be addressed further through a redevelopment agreement. And part of that parking, why is there two levels of parking? Part of that is because of size and shape of the lot, it's not big enough for a traditional parking deck, we have level parking, level parking in ramps, like what you have at the Pearl Street Plaza, you need a longer distance to really get a larger structure. So here, we're sort of constrained on the size and the shape of the lot, so podium building, meaning a building above parking, is the, really the only logical planning solution here. In terms of other design standards, we revised certain, a high level, and just throwing something at the wall, and made it more realistic, now that we're working with the developer on the potential real design of a project, where the streets, particularly Halsey Street and Calvin Place, must be designed as complete streets, meaning parking on one of both sides of the street, thirty-two feet from curb to curb, sidewalks, planting strips, street trees, decorative lighting, the whole nine. We updated public sidewalk language to be a little stronger, the parking requirements really acknowledge the new RSIS. Back in two thousand and twenty-three, the, as you recall, one-point-eight, two, two-point-one parking spaces for one, two, and three bedroom units in RSIS were minimum requirements. Since the plan was adopted, it stays updated as RSIS, but those are now maximums. So the redevelopment plan simply just acknowledges that the new RSS requirements, and the borough is establishing a lower parking requirement. that the new RSS requirements and the borough is establishing a lower parking requirement. There's also additional standards for parking garages, surface parking areas, landscaping, and lighting, really to reflect, to deal with a building design that's becoming more real, is want to make sure where there are exposed parking areas, they must be screened or treated like a building. And there's other standards for building design, including upper-story setbacks. Obviously, you don't want a full six-story straight wall. There needs to be opportunities for stepping back, sort of like what Woodmont does at the corners of its five-story building. Ultimately, the building design itself also is subject to a redevelopment agreement. So in terms of its relationship to local objectives, that's one of the first things you need to do when analyzing a redevelopment plan, according to the statute. Just a reminder, this plan will supersede the underlying zoning. What that means is we're replacing the 2023 plan with this 2025 plan, and even that plan replaced the B3 zoning. So this isn't just an overlay where the developer could still do a different type of project under the B3 zone. The B3 zone underneath Matouchen Arts District doesn't exist anymore. It's now the redevelopment plan. Similar to our presentation we gave two years ago, we find that the redevelopment plan is consistent with the Borough Master Plan, particularly with goals related to preservation of residential character, mainly because the development is occurring in a downtown location, and it's not touching residential neighborhoods. The land uses are appropriate to the area, something we envisioned for years. We have rental sensitivity, benefit of public gathering spaces, and this is really looking at the Arts District as a whole. The plan is to have a public gathering space adjacent to the theater block. There's opportunities for housing and workforce housing, a focus redevelopment within and adjacent to downtown area. Again, these are things we talked about from the prior plans, and nothing's really changed except for some zoning standards. So clearly, this plan is also consistent with the master plan. In terms of the relationship to the township of Edison, there's no conflict. The project's in the middle of the borough, and it's really meant to facilitate or take advantage of the train station, only by a two-minute walk to the train station of all these properties. There's no conflict with the Middlesex County Comp Plan. In fact, I think we would argue that we're effectuating their cultural plan by having a regional focus on the arts in Matouchen. In terms of the state plan, it effectuates smart growth principles. First of all, we're in a PA1, which is a metropolitan planning area, which advocates and has goals and objectives for revitalizing cities and towns, growth in compact forms, obviously a development with housing above podium parking is a compact form, promoting redevelopment of centers or rear center, and promoting economic development, at least related to the arts in this case, and then encouraging redevelopment of intensities to support transit. Again, we're just a couple of minutes away from the train station. So it's like the model case of what the state plan wants to see in its centers. So just sort of a summary in terms of what, again, what needs to be in a redevelopment plan. So number one, we need a relationship to the local objective. That's your master plan. Already went through that. It's consistent with your master plan. In terms of proposed land use and building requirements, that's the zoning requirements in the plan. Already went through that ad nauseam about the changes to Parcells A, C, and the new standards for Parcel E, which is the University of Radiology property. Regarding number three, six, and seven, they all relate to provision of relocating housing units, including inventory of affordable housing units. This site has no housing units whatsoever, so there's nothing we need to concern ourselves with that. Number four, identification of property to be acquired. The redevelopment plan at the very end in a really general provision sections acknowledges that the Forum Theater is already owned by the borough, and the gas station is a condemnation area in development, and that's a separate action that the borough can take, which it is proceeding with a condemnation on. Otherwise, all other properties are non-commodation. The Halsey Street Lot is a non-commodation redevelopment area, and all the other properties owned by Nancy Jesson and her business groups, they are in an area needed rehabilitation where you can't acquire the properties unless it's an arm's-length agreement. And then in terms of the plan for the emission and charging infrastructure, the plan, just like the original plan for 2023, anticipates that there will be public charging infrastructure through parking structures that are constructed on the property, whether it's Parcel C, Parcel D, or anywhere else in the district, wherever there's a parking structure meant to provide parking for commuters and/or the Forum Theater, there will be a provision for public EV. So we meet all the statutory requirements of a redevelopment plan, and that's the conclusion of my presentation.
Okay, Chris, thank you. What formal action is the board taking this evening? Is it endorsing this action by the redevelopment committee? Is it merely being edified by the evolution of what's the current events? What is the board's responsibility this evening, in your opinion, Chris?
I'll refer back to the slide. The board's role is, sorry. The board's role is to review the redevelopment plan and determine whether the plan is either substantially consistent or designed effectuate your master plan. If there's anything that you have recommendations that's inconsistent, it should be prepared in a report, which could be a letter from the council to the governing body or a resolution.
Well, being as you're the person who serves as the plan for this board and has worked so extensively on it, I think we all feel pretty good at where we're at. Before we open it up to the public, I'm sure there probably are questions from the board, or maybe I would like to say something about this very significant and wonderful thing?
Thank you for that introduction. You know, it's a, this has been a process, and I think there's a lot of people who've been following this closely. Not everything we do is followed so closely. This one has a lot of interest, and, you know, I think a council president, I'm sure, would concur that this has been a serious focus. No matter what we've been working on over the last, you know, five to seven years, this has been a significant focus of our administration because we know how important it is to this community. But it isn't easy to just build a theater. You know, theaters, as we've been reminded at the last meeting and the council meeting, you know, theaters run by nonprofit organizations, which is every theater in America other than, you know, Broadway and Broadway-like in other cities around the country, are losers economically. There's no theater in America that can function on just concessions, facility fees, and rental fees alone. And that's an alarming fact that we have been forced to face as a community. Because, you know, we really want this theater, but you're balancing that against something that potentially could be, you know, an economic detriment. And so how can you be a responsible public official, bring, you know, a theater to the community to add to our thriving arts, you know, community, but also manage the budget for such a thing so that it can become an economic, you know, additive to our community as opposed to a drain? And that's really been the problem that we've been trying to solve, and it's not an easy one. And so, you know, when we talk about this plan, this plan is designed, and it's, you know, New Jersey redevelopment law is very useful to a place like Matouchen, because it allows us to come up with a concept that can give us what we need without having to go through, you know, the land use aspect, the ordinance changes to, you know, modify this. And, you know, it attaches almost to this vision planning, which we were able to do. And so this is amendment, and I think I've been told, our redevelopment council is here, Jim Malley, who was really useful through this process. But, you know, there's really no redevelopment plan that this borough has ever put together that doesn't later need to be amended, and that's normal. That's part of the process. Because, you know, you have your general vision of how things are going to go, and then as you start being more specific about how you're fulfilling that vision, you get into the details and you realize, wait a minute, if we're going to do this, we'd have to amend here, or we have to, you know, add here, or subtract there. I mean, we, you know, there's an aspect that Mr. Cessenza brought up specifically about the fact that, you know, this is conceptually less dense, for example, than we originally intended. And that's part of the process. That's part of, from our side, it's important for the residents to understand, from our side, that is the process we go through. You know, you don't, you can't always figure everything out at once. When you're on our side of things, you're going through this, you're processing. There are days of enlightenment, and there are days of deep disappointment. We have had moments, over the last few weeks in particular, where we have come to certain realizations and saying, we can't build that, or we have to do this instead. And, you know, you're working with people who are looking to make money on a project, and you want to make sure that they're doing so responsibly and that we, as elected officials, can put our heads on the pillow at night. And that's the struggle. Like, that's what we deal with, and that's the economic reality of this whole process. How badly do we want a theater? And how willing are we to bring in a partner who is looking to, you know, obviously help us, but what are they looking for in return? And that is the, that's the push and pull and the difficulty. It's easy, you know, to be in the public and say, you know, you can't do this, you have to do this, and believe me, we hear it all. And so we're processing that. And I think that this redevelopment plan and these amendments are a reflection of that, of that, of that, of that process that you're seeing take place in real time. I've talked to some people about the fact that over the last few weeks, we've had a difficult time because we really, really want to make sure that if nothing else, there is something that could sustain this theater going forward. Because again, building the theater is great, keeping the lights on is another story. And how do we keep the lights on going forward? And what we've realized through this, and I said this publicly at the meeting in March, at the council meeting, is that we need a parking garage that's built for us. Parking garages are way more expensive than anyone realizes. I don't know exactly how much per square foot, but a lot, let's put it that way. The parking garage that we would anticipate getting as part of something like this, I think is in the range of a $10 to $13 million type of dynamic. Concrete is incredibly expensive, and the podium effect that Mr. Cessenza described would be designed to make sure that we get sort of dual use out of the parking garage, because you get the concrete for the garage itself, and then that concrete podium can support the building that envelops it. There's also another element to this project that's interesting that has sort of come out of this discussion, and it is the eyesore that has come to be as you're driving on Main Street, north on Main Street, and you look to the left, or, you know, south on Main Street, and you look to the right, and that substation that looks like something from an alien movie that, you know, that Amtrak, I think, owns. And, you know, it's always been there, but we never really noticed it because it was blocked by a series of homes that had been demolished by the current owner of those properties. And so, you know, I know that there's obviously a concept of an overall arts district and everything else, but, you know, that is just an empty parking lot right now. It has an opportunity to be the nest egg for us to be able to sustain a theater in the future, A, and B, it gives us an opportunity to sort of re-envision that area. But God knows that area will never be re-envisioned with a substation staring at all of us, future generations. I think that's important as well. And, you know, people are opposed, people are, well, there's a mix of, there's a mix of feelings on apartments in our town in general. The one thing that we know for sure is that there is a shortage of housing in Matouchen. There is a lot of demand for development of apartments. I don't think the public truly understands how many of these projects we do, everything we can to sort of push away, because we really want to be deliberative and careful about how these things go. But there is a, this is a, this is a, this is a very useful opportunity, one that we're highly focused on, to bring a theater to our town. And so when you're singularly focused like this for the last, you know, again, five to seven years, and we see this opportunity as a result of a statute that is now, you know, open, applications for which open in April and end in June, we can get tax credits to mostly pay for this thing. I mean, that's what it comes down to. And so the reason we're acting now is because we have this window, that we are going to do everything we possibly can to strike at. And we think we, through this plan and through this opportunity, and again, the Halsey and the theater aspect, will be able to get this thing online in 2027. So this is, this has been years in the process. It is a complex deal, if you will, for all of us. It has not been easy. It will still be hard. It would be harder before it gets easier again, and we can walk through those doors and see a performance in our community. But we're getting there, finally. We have a path, and, you know, I'm really hopeful that this planning board sees all the work that's gone into it between our, you know, redevelopment council, our planner with Jim Constantine and Chris Cessenza, who's, you know, started with the borough as a professional years before he even joined the planning ranks, you know, our council president, our council, our director of economic development, Linda Koskowsky, who's on this board, and of course, Melissa Perlstein, our, you know, borough administrator. We've been working towards this. So we're almost at the point where, you know, again, we have a more clear path. And I appreciate everyone, you know, taking the time out of this beautiful night to help us get to that next point where we can send this back to the council and continue to move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Wonderful dissertation and a lot of moving parts to get right. Very difficult, very challenging.
The council, I think.
Councilman?
Thank you, Chairman. So just a comment and just a clarification, Chris. So first, I was really happy to see, and you mentioned it as well during your presentation, that you've, as part of this re-amendment to the redevelopment plan, that you've enhanced the vision statement. And that comes, as you mentioned, directly from the community sessions that we had at Edgar School. So I just wanted to thank you for going through all those, filtering out the ideas, and more importantly, thank the community for coming out to those sessions to provide that feedback. You've had a direct impact into what this project is going to be. So thank you. And for the clarification, and I do think you got, you made this point, but I just really want to dumb it down. Parcel E, which is University of Radiology, what we're doing here and why it's coming in is essentially cleanup, right? This is cleanup of existing use. We're not contemplating any kind of changes to this property, but you're doing some cleanup so that we statutorily are in line. But also, if in the future, something were to have changed at University of Radiology, we also have the option to have these arts-related uses. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. Truthfully, it's something I missed when we did the redevelopment plan back in 2020, when we first started working on it, as well as in 2023. Realizing that the University of Radiology property is a non-conforming use in R2 zone, a subdivision to allow for that strip of land to be consolidated as part of a larger theater block would trigger a use issue. And we just want to eliminate that technical issue by incorporating that use in the entire property into the plan. And yes, to your point, I took the liberty of adding the ability of arts-related uses, which could be the home for the Arts Council right next to Linda's house. And that could be an opportunity to expand those arts uses. Or if the borough, if the property were to be sold in the future, it could continue to be developed with single-family housing. But I felt like it was appropriate, given the scale and the types of housing in the neighborhood, to also include two family and live-work units.
But at the moment, we don't have any, we're not contemplating any changes. University of Radiology is not going anywhere. It's just a sending us up for the future if we get to.
Yes, and I think it sets them up well in the future, too, because now their use is conforming.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask?
Yes, please.
So first of all, Chris, I just want to say thank you. You've done a marvelous job on a very complicated subject, and so you're making it very understandable for us, but I still have some questions. And the other thing, well, before I get to the questions, one of the things I would like to say is that I think largely this is in line with the master plan. This is exactly the kind of development I would be looking for in a transit-oriented development situation, having, you know, higher-density housing right next to the train station, really just the perfect use for that land. But having said that, I just want to clarify a couple of things. So this would allow for a six-story building.
Sorry?
This would allow for a six-story building.
Only on Parcel C, yes.
Only on Parcel C. Could you maybe talk a little bit about how that fits in with the, like, you know, I guess, Woodmont, like, the height-wise? Like, how's it going to look?
Truthfully, it's going to be a matter of perspective of where you want the property. It's going to have a comparable height to Woodmont if you're in the Calvin Place side, because we anticipate as buildings further designed, and with a redevelopment agreement, we could really require design to be well-done, where that building, that portion of the building will have a similar height as the current Woodmont property, if not lower. There will be portions of the building that will appear taller than Woodmont. Woodmont has an allowance for 65 feet. This plan allows for an allowance of 70 feet, but that's across the site. And the grade change means that it could be 60, 65 feet at one corner, it could be 70, 72 feet at the other. 70, 72 feet at the other corner. And it was for that reason and difficulty, especially knowing that that side of the building is adjacent to a residence. We pushed hard and pushed back. It's like, that 10-foot setback doesn't work anymore. The current plan does allow for a five-story, five-story building up to 10 feet away from the property line, but if they're contemplating that extra story, even though the lower two levels are going to be shorter in height because of parking, we still had that concern, which is why we pushed really far back now in the new plan, amended proposed plan, to double the step back to 20 feet. And as you get to the second story, basically above the podium parking structure, the building has to be stepped back even further to 40 feet.
Okay, so what you're saying is that any kind of massing would really be placed against the train?
Correct.
Line, which is where it should be?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll have the same appearance as Woodmont is. In fact, Woodmont's even longer, much longer, probably double the length as the Halsey Street Lot has frontage, frontage along the northeast corridor. But we push for the, I'll call it the wedding cake style, stepping back on the sides of the building facing residential area.
Okay. And then just one last thing, because I want to, like, just make, just in my mind, have it under, so this is all subject to an executed redevelopment agreement. So once we get into negotiations with the developer, we would have to execute a redevelopment agreement that would then really hone in on the details of what we're allowing?
Yes. The base zoning in the current redevelopment plan, as well as in the proposed redevelopment plan, amended plan, that is, allows for a maximum density of 36 units per acre. That means someone could get an application with the parking authority's consent to build a building with 36 units per acre. Any decimal place above 36 units per acre but up to 92 requires a redevelopment agreement. And that's the opportunity to say, you could have a project that meets all the standards, but you may decide as a borough redevelopment entity, as a borough council, to not enter an agreement because you don't like to look at the building. You have that much power through the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. And then one last thing, just to, just to sort of put a fine point on it. The affordable housing unit requirement remains, will be 20% for any project that goes here? Is that a borough-wide?
So this redevelopment plan is silent on that. So it would rely on the underlying ordinances, which is 15%. But through a redevelopment agreement, especially if you're going to want, entertain a payment alue of taxes, or the six-story increased floor ratio, you should be asking for 20%. And I believe the mayor and council, we've talked about special needs housing and...
We've already committed on this project to a 20% set aside. And that's, there's a, there's a grant, and I think that, you know, Ms. Koskowsky knows this, too, and it's important to talk about, there's a, there's a certain application process that very few developers actually utilize, but some do and do well. That's called Aspire. That's, that's, that's used by, with estate opportunities. So the, the, this particular developer that we're starting to work with, that we think through DevCo, is, is looking to apply for an Aspire grant. And the Aspire grant would, would allow for, you know, the borough to get more back, again, the give-backs of the parking garage, for example. But as part of that process, of course, you'd have to be a 20% affordable piece. And we're also able to sort of craft the affordability, you know, without getting into too much detail about the affordable housing aspect to this project. It's very important to us as a, as a community. It's a way for us to help express our ideals of what's important to communities like ours. And so, you know, whereas both Galton and Woodmont were 15%, this one's going to be 20%, which, which we're feeling really good about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bertha Koskowsky. Okay, other members of the board? Questions for Chris or comments?
Sure. I, it's also very exciting. I mean, we heard about the borough acquiring the forum or intending to acquire the forum. Mayor said it was, is it actually seven years ago? It's, it's just amazing.
July, July of 19, I think, is when we actually had that press conference when my hair looked like that, but yes, less gray.
I, I personally, as a long-term resident of Metuchen, couldn't be more excited. There are, there are certain inflection points, I think, that arise, opportunities that arise that are unpredictable. And here's one that arose with the forum and the former owner of the forum looking to, to sell and move that property on, and, and the opportunity presented itself. It's an opportunity that the borough has seized that can uplift and make the borough attractive, not for five years or 10 years, but for the next 50 years, for the next 75 years. And the fact that so much work has gone into it, and a lot of hard work, and the financing, and the grant from Middlesex County, and, and these new opportunities for funding, it's, in a way, it is incredibly fortuitous. And we, and we, as a borough, are incredibly lucky that this opportunity presented itself to the borough council, and that they were able to, to take advantage of it. And I'm just excited. I, I can't wait to see it. I wish it was all done already. You know, I, I don't want to wait, you know, '27 sounds awfully ambitious, but I hope it's true.
If I could just say, you know, one of the things that's fascinating about this project in particular is it is totally, it's as Metuchen as it is because of the fact that we're embracing so much of the arts piece and the, you know, the, the commuter piece and the, you know, the smart growth piece and the affordable, and all the, all these different aspects of things that are important to us, and a lot of the feedback we got also through the session. But it's also, like, very un-Metuchen-like in terms of the light speed that is required for us to act in order to take advantage of the tax credit process. You know, we've known this was coming for a while. The statute that enables this was adopted in December of 2023. Governor Murphy came to Metuchen in April of '24 to actually announce this. You know, things happen in New Jersey, and people don't know about them. Sometimes it's because we don't have our own media, you know, we have to rely on New York or Philadelphia, and what does this mean, a tax credit program? People don't get it. But this thing passed the Senate Assembly and was signed by the governor in the same day. On what planet does that happen? But it's a big deal, not just from Metuchen. It's a big deal for New Jersey because it's, it's, it's over a billion dollars of tax credit dollars. These are not taxes. These are tax credits. These are paid by corporations as an incentive to stay in New Jersey. So if you're Verizon and you're threatening to leave and build a new headquarters somewhere in, in Ohio or something, the state makes a deal. And they say, "Look, instead of $100 million in taxes, you'll get an $80 million price tag, and we'll give you $800 million worth of credits." It's like buying a gift card at Costco for 20 that's worth 25. Okay? And that money, the state has said, you know, it's important that this money not go to the Division of Revenue. We're going to keep this in a separate pile to help us accomplish policy objectives that we have here in New Jersey. And they have a number of policy objectives, but this particular statute said that cultural and arts institutions matter to us. You know, so places like the Newark Museum could get money, places like Newark Symphony Hall, places like the SS New Jersey in Camden, you know, the Patterson Falls, you know, landmarks, museums, theaters, the Rialto in, in Westfield. I mean, this is, these places around our state are in dire need of, you know, sustenance and repair. And, and it's a big deal that our state allowed this to happen because it'll allow, you know, vision like, you know, Mr. Lifton's talking about to come to pass. And, you know, we could sit here and say all we want, we want money for our theater, but it doesn't just happen. They, these things don't grow on trees, but they do come out of the legislature when priorities are expressed, and that's what's happened here. So it's really an opportunity, a phenomenal opportunity, but it's going to happen faster than things usually happen in Metuchen because we're on somebody else's timeline, and that's the reality.
Well, I, I certainly hope so. For those of you who know, I'm involved in another large construction project in Metuchen at this moment.
It's plural, it's projects.
And, you know, just imagine how it goes when you want to renovate your bathroom in your house, how much longer it takes than you expect, and sometimes there's extra money involved, and sometimes they find something in the wall that you don't expect them to find. And so I certainly hope and pray that your enthusiasm for the speed of the project is realized because the sooner it's completed, the better, and the more the borough can enjoy it. And the whole state of New Jersey, I mean, one would certainly hope that Metuchen will, it already is a destination, we know, for, for this part of New Jersey, and hopefully that reputation will only be enhanced going forward due to this project. I did have a couple of questions, though. Talk a lot about leveraging the train. Obviously, that's a core of all of this type of planning, is the fact that we, we sit on the northeast corridor, on the, on the main line into the Manhattan, and our train station is two-minute walk from the new proposed development on, on Halsey, and also not even, not that many more minutes from the proposed theater. I would hope that there would be people from outside of Metuchen who would want to come to the theater, and that the train, you don't have to drive to Metuchen to get there. You can take the train and walk the five minutes or whatever it would be from the train station down Main Street. Has there been consultation with New Jersey Transit regarding the station? And, I mean, more people, more commuters, are they involved in this project or the planning of this project at all? Do we have any sort of commitment from them to perhaps upgrade the station, which is looking a bit long in the tooth? Or, or are they not involved at all? And if they're not, is that something that's on the agenda to speak with them about?
I think I was answered a question. I don't believe they have been involved, but the comments you raise are good points because I would like to capture that in the master plan. And I've been engaging with New Jersey Transit and other related studies and projects, and it might be an opportunity to engage with them, to really think about, especially as Metuchen has more commuters and more dollars are being spent here, it might be an opportunity to engage with them.
All right, thank you. And also, I, I, not 100% clear. Obviously, there's parcel A, which is the proposed arts center, the theater and other arts uses. This parcel C, which is the, currently the Halsey Lot, which will be developed. I'm unclear what the, how the, how this redevelopment plan impacts parcels B and D. Obviously, you, you made a comment about parcel B, about disappearing Victorian houses and just open views of substations, and how would those parcels, and obviously, they were incorporated in the original plan as well, but I'm not clear on how this plan impacts the development of those parcels and why they are in fact included, and what including them does for the borough's ability to control and develop those parcels, which right now, a number of them are empty and looking quite forlorn.
So essentially, no changes, other than, I believe, a minor change in parcel B. If someone were to retract changes between the two, we did add offices back in as a permitted use in parcel B to allow for the two remaining buildings fronting Main Street. One was hit by a car, the porch is undergoing repair, and one is affectionately known as Grandma's House from Nancy Jensen's family. So the office uses are allowed to be there. It was removed, I would say probably by error on my part, in 2023, so that was put back in as permitted use. So that's really effectively the only change affecting parcels B and D. We have been, Linda and I have been talking about a, a potential redevelopment of the properties, but I think we're a long way from that. There's no conditional redevelopment, there's no agreement, no escrow is even set up, but we're, we're starting a discussion about what could happen there with the property owners' representatives. In terms of why they were incorporated into the plan, I think it was really a logical planning discussion in terms of the context of the Forum Theater and where the parking would be. Ideally, parking would be better served in B, or actually, D is better because it's closer to theater, but we don't have control over that property. So we're working with what we have. But the idea was that we would connect the properties into one overall district, which is a nice contiguous piece of properties south of the northeast corridor and the Old Colonial Cemetery. It's important for us to think about the whole connectivity between the parking lot, which will be eventually redeveloped, the parking structure and units, be connected to the Forum Theater, and give opportunities for buildings and spaces to be developed in harmony with that connection and pedestrian movement. So I think from a planning perspective, it's important to think holistically about the whole area. But reality is, by incorporating them and having certain densities allowed to play, it actually benefited the property owner, but we're not requiring certain things be done. It's, it's not condemnation. It's, it's really up to them if they want to develop.
So, um, so the fact that, that these parcels are included in the redevelopment plan does not restrain the owner from continuing to demolish buildings, for example?
Sorry, say it again, the last part?
As we've seen, at least a few of the buildings on those parcels have been demolished, the inclusion of these parcels in the redevelopment plan does not restrain the owner from continuing to demolish buildings?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm, I'm still don't understand why they're included. What do we, why, why, what, what leverage or what, what is the borough gain by including B and D into the, into the plan if the individual owner is still in complete control of their property, as you would expect, and the borough has no enhanced rights or say over those properties? What's the point?
I'm not sure I would use the word leverage in terms of control and development. Again, I think it's more or less, first of all, it was a reaction. In 2023, it was a reaction to the building being demolished. We knew we needed a plan in place for potential redevelopment. So in that sense, we were requiring certain design standards so that any future redevelopment is consistent with what we want to see on a Forum Theater Lot, as well as the Halsey Street Lot, which are disconnected and not connected. We don't have an ordinance in place that would restrict demolition.
So Jimmy, re redevelopment council for the borough. So the benefit of doing it, of including it within the plan is for the law, for the long term. So now, when there's zoning that's put in place from the original plan for those areas, if a developer wants to go, if the owner wants to tear down those buildings, they do, they have the right to go tear down those buildings. They can only build in conformity with the plan. And what this does is lays up, lays out a structure, and it is working because we've already been contacted by the property owner here, that with the plan that's now being considered, they have ideas about what they would like to do to develop there. So we're beginning those discussions. It, it sets the table for a development that would be consistent with the plans, the kind of the bookends of the Halsey Lot and the theater. So it just sets the stage. It lays out pretty clearly that this is the, the borough's goal here is to make this be a comprehensive, coordinated development. So that's, that's all it does. It just kind of sets us up for that and kind of makes very clear that the goal here is to create an arts district, not just a theater. So it gives us a little, and it, it's working. There's a little, nothing's done yet, but there's a couple little ripples coming off of it.
And if I can, and if I could jump in, one of the things that's incredibly important to us is historic preservation in here. Now, we can't restrict someone from tearing down a property. We've gone through that at a lot of levels. We had a discussion about that actually at our last council meeting, which was pretty extensive. But we've expressed to the property owner how are our concerns about losing those structures, and of course, we would love, and you can see in the, in the redevelopment agreement, excuse me, the redevelopment plan, how important it is to incorporate the history of that area into this. So, you know, again, we, we have some tools at our disposal. We can't stop, although none of those tools include being able to stop a private property owner from tearing down buildings. But the fact is, as Mr., you know, Malley explained, there have been, there has been some, at least contact and discussions with the current owner as a result of some of the priorities that we were able to express for the property, which are, you know, these are, these are our community's priorities that we've expressed. We don't want to lose more of those buildings. Those are part of that, the fabric of that area. And if there was a way to keep those as part of this, you know, we, we want to try to do it.
Thank you. I appreciate your explanation.
And just to follow up on that point, I do anticipate, by virtue of how we titled the redevelopment plan, it's going to be amended again, more than likely, and we anticipate that we're probably amending the plan for the property owner as well.
All right, ahead.
Thank you. So in follow-up, actually, to that question, Ann, about this is an affordable, affordable housing. I hear we're committed to the 20%, but I also hear that the plan is silent. The redevelopment plan is currently silent on that. And now with this new questioning around private owner and what they choose to do with their land, should they decide to hire a developer to build a complex or whatever, is it possible for us to state in the plan that we are committed to 20% of that housing be affor, being affordable housing?
You can, that's a recommendation you want to give the council to be more specific, but it may not be necessary. If a lot of development is triggered through redevelopment agreement, we're going to get, we're going to ask for 20% regardless. And in the case of the Halsey Street Lot, their funding mechanism requires that they provide 20% anyway. So with that respect to the project, we're going to get 20%.
Okay. Thank you.
All the board members, I'm sorry. Yes, one more, newest members. Thank you.
Could you maybe grab the microphone?
Yeah.
If you have one, thank you.
Thank you very much for that very interesting presentation. I'm trying to wear my sustainability hat on, and I haven't gone through your packages yet. But I was wondering to what extent you think, you know, green infrastructure or, you know, smart technology for energy efficiency and the like would be incorporated, or would it be incorporated in the redevelopment, the, the plan, or is that more within the landscape of the developer?
I think the answer is both, but we do have design standards specific to the sustainable design and green building design standards. It's in section six... It's in section six, almost at the very, very end. And it's actually pretty typical of our other redevelopment plans we did for Oakite and for Galton. It's actually section 6.5.9 on page 62. What we do is we outline 20 strategies that they should consider for sustainable design. There's also some design standards related to, I believe, green infrastructure. Let me just go back one second, sorry. All right, so not green infrastructure specifically, but for sustainable design, we had 20 features and a developer must pick at least, I believe it's two of them, at least, actually, no, at least 10. So if there's 20 items, they must pick 10 of them. And one of them is, for example, Energy Star certified windows, Energy Star certified light fixtures. So it's in the realm of, I think, what you're looking for. But I'll be happy to work with you over the next few years to really strengthen that for future redevelopment plans.
Yes, I mean, since it's an area level plan, I think, and not a building specific plan, I think this would be a fantastic opportunity to showcase, you know, new developments in green infrastructure, blue infrastructure, whatnot. That could really make the plant shine and be quite unique and novel.
Agreed, yeah. I think by virtue of redeveloping a surface parking lot 100% paved, any new building will be an improvement there, but you're right, there are certain standards that we should strive for, and that'll be part of redevelopment agreement as well.
And since Planner Consensus is a lead AP, he'll be the first one out there charging for bioswells and capturing gray water and everything else along the way. So whether it's lead AP silver or not, we know that you're always looking for those sustainable initiatives as part of your planning. Other members of the board who haven't had an opportunity to speak or ask a question?
I just wanted to clarify something. So in terms of the actual parking structure, that will be the first two levels of the new building, those details and those spots, that will all come when we work with the developer in terms of understanding, like the number of parking spots that will be there versus what exists now in Halsey and how, and who those spots will be available to and all that, that comes with the specifics?
Yeah, I think there's, there's two opportunities for that. First of all, when we negotiate a redevelopment agreement, those details, I'm sure the Borough Council as redevelopment entity is going to want to know those details. And once the redevelopment agreement is executed, they have to submit for site plan approval. So you will have an opportunity to review that as well. What this redevelopment plan does is essentially replace or update the zoning. They still have to file for a site plan.
Okay.
Well, I would just say, but if you have concerns about that, I can answer. I'll just say that there will still be spots for every Metuchen commuter. That's one thing that the council's committed to, number one. And then, number two, you know, there'll, there'll be an opportunity for parking for theater goers because that's the idea, right? I mean, this has always been the parking lot for the people attending the theater. But we also know from other, you know, experiences around, in other places, for example, I've heard multiple people give me the example over at Red Bank at the Count Basie Theater that, you know, everyone I've spoken to about that says, you know, and I haven't been there in a long time, I don't remember where I parked, but I remember hearing people say, like, I've never once parked in the designated theater parking for Red Bank because typically I go out to eat first or out to eat later, or there's just, it kind of gets absorbed into the town's parking, you know, what? So, you know, that's, that's one element. But number three, and this is a critically important piece because we are getting revenue now, the Parking Authority at least, is getting revenue now from the commuters. The theater's not operational, so there's not been any revenue in that regard. But the, the other revenue source would be the apartment dwellers who will, let's be honest, even though they're living on the train line in the most convenient spot to a New York-bound train anywhere in Metuchen, those would be new parkers newly accommodated for this in a secure, you know, garage. And so that's the built-in additional revenue above and beyond what we have. And so it's just, you know, there's three categories of people who we're considering. Commuters, you know, obviously theater goers who will usually come when the commuters leave because the commuters are there nine to five or so, or maybe eight to six, whatever you say. And then the shows are typically, you know, seven or eight o'clock at night. So one group leaves, the other comes in. And parking revenue is, by the way, something that, like, I don't think any of us have ever considered unless we really start thinking about it. But the experts will tell you that you always oversubscribe your lot because just, you know, just because you have, let's say, you know, 140 people who are living, have cars that are living in the, in the units, those cars are not all going to be, those people aren't all going to be going on the train. And at some point, they start to figure out about 20 or 30 of those leave a day to drive somewhere. Those are not 20 or 30 spots that are available for commuters. And, you know, you start to see a flow. And so, yeah, you may have, I think the latest we looked at was like 272 parking spots or whatever. We, I don't remember what number, but, you know, you end up having 450 people that actually are parking there regularly, maybe more, and that's really how you bring the revenue up. This is a revenue generator, a parking garage. That's, straight up, that's what it's designed to do because it accommodates parking now, but having a garage helps us really monetize in a different kind of way.
And so much more efficient use of the land.
Correct.
At all times. I agree.
And then just to add on to that, you also have something I've been thinking about. Not all theater goers are going to necessarily even park there. I could see many parking in the center of our downtown, going to dinner, parking in that structure, and then just doing that very, very short walk. So there's lots of opportunities for benefits here.
Anyone else who hasn't had a chance to speak? I think everyone, I believe everyone has spoken, right? Okay. So just want, when we open it up to the public, if you'd like to make a comment, ask a question, I don't know, if you want to separate those or keep those together, come on down to the microphone, tell us your name, your address, and what's on your mind. And, um, gentlemen's gonna, I'm not sure if you want to swear him in or?
Nino Lestella, 242 Amboy Avenue, and I do cohabitate with Linda. And.
I can swear you in if you're going to be making a statement. Are you, are you asking questions? You want me to swear you in if you're going to make a statement?
Sure. A statement? Yes, you can swear me in, I guess.
Okay. Raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. It was more a question than a testimony, but I want to be covered, you know? I'm Catholic, so, you know, I want to cover all the bases. Anyhow, what I was interested in is the parcel E, because we are the neighbors to the east. And what I just wanted to ask simply, and I'm sure it's a simple answer, that the zoning cleanup that you have done only applies to that parcel, not the rest of the block?
Yes, it applies to the entirety of the University of Radiology property, but not the residential units next to it.
Thank you. That's it. Do I have to unswear now?
Thank you very much.
All righty. Anyone else in the public who would like to share their thoughts or ask a question at this time? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public portion. You know, I want to get ahead of myself here. All I can say is, being witness to history up here with former Councilman Grossman for the better part of, I don't know, 28 years, it kind of takes your breath away to think about what a dynamic environment all of our professionals are working in collaboratively. You know, when I think about the district and the tenor of what was possible 20, 30 years ago and how it was looked upon, the thought of having the Forum, it's, it's like a moonshot moment for our community, and it takes my breath away, and I can only hope that it, it comes to fruition. But what a daunting task, and aren't we lucky to have so many capable people all working towards that aim while taking everyone's interest at heart? And having yapped enough, I will now ask the board, prior to its responsibility to find that it is in accordance with the master plan and seek to write a recommendation and a report. Prior to that, I'll ask if there are other things, questions, comments, statements that we should be making at this time that I haven't considered yet. Well, I think we've achieved closure, so it would seem. So if that's the case, the chair will entertain a motion of any kind.
I'd like to move that the, I'm not quite sure what the correct wording is, that it is in, that the proposal is in accordance with the master plan. Is that sufficient? I know there were two elements that we could find.
Draft a report that will report back to the council saying that if there are any additional findings that our planner finds that we should, we could incorporate them. Chris, is that, you have specific language or maybe we should be? How do we want to word that?
Sure, I mean, we're, it's just an advisory that, that the redevelopment plan, that the amendment is consistent with the master plan. So if the answer is yes, then that is simple enough. If it were a no, then we'd be drafting a report, recommendations, here's what, here's what Chris got wrong. But as usual, Chris has got nothing wrong, it sounds like, so it's just going to be essentially a thumbs up.
Excellent. I'd like to make that motion.
And so that motion's good. Can I please have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Can we, we have a vote, please?
Mayor Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Ms. Gelber?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Lifson?
Yes.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Erickson?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is successful. Congratulations. And now let's hope for the best and keep on keeping on, right? Because it's going good. Okay. Prior to adjournment, anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay. All seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We are adjourned, thank you all.